It is just a little after 4:30 actually, so we'll go ahead and get rolling with the work session today. Do you have one presentation that we're going to go through? Probably helpful if I actually hit the next slide. To go through an ordinance for the county marshal, we're working on revisions to try to get those presented so that each of you have an opportunity to look over those for the next couple of weeks and respond with any questions you have whenever Bill Wood is going to present that here in just a minute. The presentation we're going to do tonight, we have worked through under the previous commission when we had two other board members a while back, who really never reached the point to sign that into into ordinance. But we have met with, worked with the magistrate judge, the sheriff, and several others to have their input. We have our chief marshal here who's been working through revisions, looking over that as well, and working with a couple of the county marshals to discuss it. So when we get through that, that's, there's a lot of research that went into it. I know it's a lot of material that's in there versus the existing one sentence county marshal ordinance that's in place right now. So it is a, it is a change, but it does kind of provide the parameters for us there. And then we'll move into department head updates and any discussion points that y'all got on anything else. We'll get those as well. So with that, I'm going to actually turn the floor over to Bill. For those that are here, Bill's the director of our administrative operation divisions, and he's gonna go through some slides on this.
Thanks, Chris. So this is the draft revised marshal's office ordinance. As Chris had mentioned, we've presented this before. The current ordinance, as Chris mentioned, is very short. Not that short. And this is the only provision that we have. And it says pursuant to section 1510-100 of the code, powers given to the office of the county commissioner to enact a marshal's office. The county marshal will subject to standards of chapter eight, title 35 of the code. County marshal will have the duty of enforcing the ordinances of Pickens County and prosecuting such ordinances in the county magistrate court. The primary responsibility of the county marshal will be enforcement of the issues pertaining to the environment in the county. The strength of this is there's not much there, so it's very flexible and it's, you know, a lot left to interpretation, and that's also its weakness. So it does require some work, I think, for what we're going to try to do with it. Oh, it was passed in 2003. So the proposed structure of the amended, proposal amended ordinance, you're going to see, we have the section we just read, that's going to be an amended provision. Then we have four new provisions, and that is section 2322, the county marshal's office personnel, the chief county marshal in section 2-323, deputy county marshals in section 2-324, and then section 2-325 is going to be code enforcement officers, which you will see will be civilian positions. The objectives that we set out when we did this, really the things that drove us to do it, was to more effectively empower the marshal's office, provide more clarity to the role and professional standards of the marshal's office, stress the public safety core of the marshal's office function, foster versatility and balance within code enforcement, and that's both civilian and law enforcement, establish a foundation for growth and interoperability with other agencies and other departments, and then be the first step in the integrated renovation of compliance provision in the COO, which is going to be, is planned to be a major undertaking in '23 on a broader, much broader basis than just this, but this is the first step ordinance wise. The collaboration today, we're circling back to what Chris said. Chris, Chief Magistrate Judge Allen Morris, Sheriff Craig, County Attorney Landrum, Chief Marshal Carswell, and then we had the good fortune of having as a special advisor who's deeply involved in this, Chief Ron Hunt, who's retired chief marshal from Cherokee, also retired from Cobb County PD, and teaches statewide on various things, including organizational structure of law enforcement agencies. We look a lot at other counties when we do just about anything to give us a frame of reference. So we looked at several benchmark counties that have marshal's offices, ranging from population low of just under 18,000 to a population high of almost 270,000. And these were Raven at the top, Cherokee on the bottom, with some things in between. So obviously, size wise, we share a lot of commonality with Dawson, and Raven is smaller than us. And then, and then Troop is, you know, a good bit above us, and then we have the rest of them. But these are all of the, of the marshal's office functions that we looked at. You can see where we stand in that in terms of positioning. And just from a context standpoint, we also have other benchmark counties. We have 21 benchmark counties that we look at from structural and operational standpoint, and we have 10 financial benchmark counties. And again, what we try to do is understand what's going on in these other counties, compare our data and metrics to theirs, and just see how we stacked up. And it's, it's served us well so far, and it's served us well in this exercise here. The process. We had an initial draft, we had an interim draft, that was the one that was presented. Final draft is today. Adopt the ordinance, whatever basically comes out of it from either this or edited this. That's upcoming, and then the implementation of it through a set of standard operating procedures in the marshal's office itself. All right, now this is the appendix, and it is, it is basically a cut up of the document that you have there in front of you. Won't cover all of this, just some of it, because it gets a little bit tedious. Probably walk through most of the provisions on the chief marshal piece, and then just a couple of things on the other provisions. The proposed text, I'm not going to read it at this point, and you'll see why in a second. So this is the, this is the old text that we read before. You can see it there again. This is the new text, and compare the two, and I'll just read the new text. Pursuant to the code 1510-100C1, powers given to the Pickens County Board of Commissioners to establish and maintain a county marshal's office. The primary duty of the county marshal's office is to inform the ordinances of Pickens County for proper prosecution and sentencing of violation of such ordinances in the county magistrate court. Other lawful duties may be imposed on the county marshal's office at the discretion of the Board of Commissioners. So it adds a little bit more specificity, and it brings it up to date in terms of there being a Board of Commissioners as opposed to just a county commissioner. So 322 is basically concerns, as we said before, county marshal's office personnel. It's short, so I'll read that. With the concurrence of the chairman of the Board of Commissioners and within the allowable confines of applicable annual budget of the county, as approved by the Board of Commissioners, the county marshal's office may employ a chief county marshal, deputy county marshals, and code enforcement officers, including animal control officers. And this is the provision about the chief county marshal. The chief county marshal shall be responsible for the day-to-day operations of the county marshal's office. The chief county marshal shall report to the designee of the Board of Commissioners. The chief county marshal will be subject to the standards of that same provision of the code, and we added it, and shall be post-certified. The chief county marshal must be at least 21 years of age, have a high school diploma, or GED, and possess a Georgia State driver's license. The chief county marshal must be of good moral character, standing in the community, and not have been convicted of a felony. At his or her discretion, the sitting sheriff of Pickens County may administer the oath of office to the chief county marshal, thereby lawfully bestowing such powers as specified by the applicable laws of the state of Georgia. I'll stop here. This is done in several counties across the state, and this is the way in that here and in those counties that the chief marshal and deputy county marshals, when they do come here, are able to be mandated. And so that's, that's basically the basis for that position. And again, this is, this is done in several counties. The powers of the chief county marshal shall be as follows in accordance with applicable provisions of the Constitution of the state of Georgia and other applicable laws of the state of Georgia, to enforce all, excuse me, all ordinances enacted by the Board of Commissioners, including provisions of chapter 14, animals, to issue and serve citations for court appearances for violation of county ordinances, or at the discretion of the chief county marshal to issue warnings regarding the violation of county ordinances in lieu of citations, to investigate and collect evidence of ordinance violations, to respond to complaints of alleged ordinance violations, to appear and give testimony in any court having jurisdiction of any cases involving the prosecution of ordinance violations, to coordinate enforcement efforts with the planning and development department of the county and other applicable county departments, to perform the other duties, including arrest for state law violations, which are permissible and allowed under the code, as may be lawful and applicable in conjunction with the primary purpose of the county marshal's office, to assist as needed in the county's response to disasters and other large-scale emergency response efforts, to assist the Pickens County Sheriff's Office as requested by the Pickens County Sheriff, to perform any lawful duties required by the Board of Commissioners. And that's pretty much it. So you can see the difference between just that provision and the old one paragraph provision in terms of the specificity. Then the deputy county marshals, I'm not going to go through all of this. I'm just going to point out a couple of things. The first three provisions, I'll just point out, see there, that the chief, that that position is, is approved by the Board of Commissioners and within the budget. So that's where the approval will come from. And B, I did, yeah, I did highlight it. Deputy county marshals will be subject to the standards of OCGA title, of chapter eight, title 35, and shall also be post-certified. That's the important piece of that. And then, at his or her discretion, the act, the sitting sheriff of Pickens County may administer the oath of office to deputy marshals. Same concept as with the chief marshal. It will be the sheriff that would, that would deputize those, swear them in. That's all pretty much the same as, as the provision for the chief marshal, and the, to also assist the sheriff's office, but this time at the, at the direction of the, of the chief marshal as opposed to the sheriff, and perform any other lawful duties required by the chief marshal as opposed to the Board of Commissioners, which would basically direct the chief marshal to do those kinds of general duties. And then we have the civilian, it's the code enforcement officers of civilians, including animal control. They are not subject to the standards of the code with regard to mandated, therefore they'll be civilians. And they're basically to perform duties at the direction of the chief marshal or the deputy county marshals. And that is it. You saw what the old, what the existing one is, you see what this one is. This one looks a lot like, is different to suit the needs of the Pickens situation, but it looks a lot like the best-in-class ordinances that you'll find in some of the other counties, and not, not just the big ones either, so.
Y'all have any questions?
Chief's back here too.
So it looks like you're building a new organization essentially for the county marshal's office. Do you have any idea of what the head count for that group will be at this point? Are we just playing the framework?
I'll take a shot, and then the chief can chime in. I think that's going to be dictated by the circumstances. Because this is a, at least since we've been here, or since I've been here, since Chris has been here, there have not been very many citations at all already. And so there'll be probably a stronger enforcement situation, and, you know, so when it becomes citations driven, then it's driven by quantity, but that also has revenue type of. So.
And I'll, I'll chime in just a little bit. So, I mean, obviously, we have a chief marshal that's in existence. We do have an animal control officer that works under animal control. They just haven't fallen within this category so their power to be able to write an ordinance violation hasn't existed because they've not had anybody who could give them that power. At one point in time, they were considered to be constables in the magistrate court. The magistrate judge said, "I can't continue to do that." And then here are the cases, if I'm the one that swears them in, I can't hear the case when they bring a citation forward. So that led us to, to kind of going down this path, and then in kind of reviewing the number of cases in the broad scope of the cases that one person is responsible for taking, we've, we've been working through the process to get ready to advertise for a deputy marshal by restructuring, not creating a new county-wide position, but trying to reposition where an old position was and move it into a deputy marshal slot. So we're in the process of trying to get that piece together now so that we would no longer just have a chief marshal, we'd have a chief and a deputy, so that they can actually keep up with the quantity. And I don't want to put words in his mouth, but the wide range of what he currently deals with could be anything from dealing with litter on the side of the road to a major ordinance violation, to then the health department reaching out about an environmental health issue dealing with subject. And then you go straight from that to assisting with an internal affairs, where you deal with either law enforcement or with fire to conduct an investigation and juggling all of those together. So to be able to have a deputy to, to keep those things all moving would assist significantly and provide some direction for the, for the animal control officer to enforce code. Because once the animal control officer is, is fully trained on code enforcement and brought up the speed on all code, he has the ability to write code violations across all county codes. So that would assist in, in trying to make sure that we're going through that.
If you wouldn't mind, I'd like to ask Wes to comment on what an active marshal's ordinance office means to planning and development.
Well, of course, code enforcement, Linda might be able to, she's done a little bit better than I can. But just by virtue of non-compliance measures, buildings that have no permitting whatsoever, enforcing fines. And, you know, we do have fines occasionally. And then we get down to what else, Linda, would it be?
Well, basically, because the way the ordinance is written now, everything goes to the marshal, whether it has something to do with my job description or, or something in planning and development, or something that I see when I'm out on property. So you're just basically kind of stuck, and you don't know whether or not you even need to bring it up to someone's attention because it has to go to the marshal. So, and he's, that position is totally overwhelmed, as, as we all know. It just, I think this is going to be a good thing because it's going to give, personally, it'll give me a little bit of leeway that I can go ahead and enforce my codes, whether it be a phone call, whether it be a letter, citation, warning, that type of thing. I think it will, it will help a lot.
Thank you. So, and we've talked about how busy it is, I think it looks incredible for a 21-year-old to do this and then on qualifications.
I try.
When they were going over chief, the chief requirements for, for hiring 1B21, being post-certified and have a high school degree, I think, and I don't know if y'all had an opportunity to get to know his background, but, but our chief actually has served as a police chief. He's been a graduate with a master's degree. Very distinguished career all the way through prior to retiring as a chief. And so we, we definitely have far exceeded minimum qualifications in, in what we have and the job that he's, he's been doing. But I want to give you a chance to add anything that you see that we may administer.
No, we're, we're right on target. And I think somebody asked the question, where do we see ourselves in numbers? We really don't have a fixed answer to that. I, I think it's really going to be dependent on, on the growth of the county, one, and two, how things work out. I've talked to the commissioners, and, and we've all talked together, and it, it really depends on, I'll just be honest with you. Right now, I'm running in all different directions trying to, to handle everything, and, and it's working out just fine, don't get me wrong. It's working out real well. But it's, you never know what you, it's like a, a, a box of Cracker Jacks. You don't know what prizes inside until you wake up each day, so you don't know what you're going to get. And that's what we're trying to do now, is address all the needs with, like we said, having the civilian code enforcement along with one more deputy marshal, and us kind of see where it goes from there and, and address the needs of the citizens. And then we'll, we'll kind of work our vision forward from there. So I think we're right on target with what we're trying to do. I really do.
It takes us from a marshal to a marshal's office. So we can grow with the county as, as the county grows and the more it's needed. Or we can stay the same if, if that's what's needed as well. So that's kind of the, the intent.
I just wanted to ask, I wish Shane was here. There was no, no indication about burn ordinances. In old Cherokee, we passed that enforcement authority down to the Cherokee County Marshal's Office. We got down to those situations where people are just bucking up, you can't tell me this or that. They were the enforcement authority from where I was at before. Fire marshal kind of guys, the, the ordinances and the guidelines, and I thought we followed the state, but the state's kind of pushing everything down on a local jurisdiction to handle that. Shane's not here, which he was, I didn't listen to coming up, but feel like we need something in there with the enforcement of burn ordinances as we get to that. As we get, as we grow and get more people here, you're going to have more complaints on burning. Right now, most people are cooperative, you know, but it's, I wish it was bluffing, so we kind of, they really want to give us a hard time. So we need that enforcement leg, you know, to back us up. We have to go out there and do the use of burns and stuff. I don't know if that was thought of, we're building back here with that. You know, sort of.
Right. And he's right, we're fortunate up here because a lot of it's in your approach, and I've been very fortunate. A lot of, a lot of the folks that we go to, would you stop that? Yeah, sure. Worked that way in all cases, so.
We're at two and three times, you know. We need that muzzle though, say, "Look, you can't do this." And we, I don't think we have it, Mr. Sloan got something he can add in that. Shane, I don't think we.
Thought we had that first, first draft, though. I might be wrong.
I'll double check. I don't remember the language, but I'll definitely double check.
I just wanted to address too that it was mentioned in there, in times of disaster, the marshal's office also can assist with emergency management when it comes to price gouging and unlicensed contractors that come into the county after a disaster.
Scope is growing, bud.
And we knew that, and it will, and it's going to be something special, it really will.
All right, got news to conclude that. All right, so steps that we'll take, we'll get anything that we can pull for these, kind of put back in there. I'll have, I'll have Bill actually email you guys both of revised copies that he can be reviewing those. And then we'll plan on putting them on the agenda for our October meeting when we come together in October. And then if there's any questions to clean out, then we'll, if we need to table it, we'll table it. If not, we'll bring them to our agenda for our next meeting. All right, department heads, who all has updates that they're just eagerly waiting to get?
I've always got something to rub, y'all need to know about. I know it seems like I close the road every week, but that's, that's the price of progress. Next week is going to be Grandview Dam. Our crews out there are plowing right along on the, on the milling process. But what's going to happen when they get to the dam with the guard rail so close and machinery so big, it's not going to be safe to try to get traffic through there, have guys working on foot and whatnot. So what you say would be best, you know, for the duration of they're actually on the dam, we're going to close Grandview at the dam. You know, it'll be open to local traffic on both sides, but the dam will actually be closed as they cross it. I'm going to say it's going to be all day. Hopefully, you know, it, it won't be, but we're going to say it's going to be all day, probably from, starting at around 8 o'clock. And, but we'll try to get it back open just as soon as they get done with that process on the dam, we will open it back up. But it will be closed, and it's going to be Monday, starting at 8 o'clock. And that's about the only thing I've got that's measured this week.
And I, I engaged in a Facebook conversation that led to a phone call last night with somebody that was asking questions after reading the newspaper article on Grandview Road and the process that was there. I might encourage you guys and anybody else, you can actually go on YouTube and look up full-depth reclamation, which is FBR paving process. And then, I don't know if one construction actually has a video that's there on, but there's certainly have that full process. It's pretty fascinating to see how they come through and pulverize, recycle all the material, mix it with concrete, create a concrete base, come back and pack that in, and then come back and then pave on top of what's there. It may look like, as I know, I was talking with, with Dan Poole the other day as he was commenting about enjoying driving down this dirt road on Grandview Road. It does look that way, but it's actually a very firm concrete mixed base that's going underneath this process that several engineering firms have, have talked to us about.
Part of what's caused that, Grandview was originally, the base under Grandview was actually creek gravel that came from, I think where Bent Tree Lake is now. There used to be a crusher up in there, so they actually dug, dug gravel out of the creek when that was okay and crushed it. But that's what you're seeing. It, it's not really, it's not base like we think of it now, but it, it is a brown sandy soil. It's not soil, but a brown sandy gravel. And whenever it mills in, it does look like dirt kind of, but it is, it is a sandy thing. And the operator out there, he said it's one of the best places that he's ever done this process with because there's so many fines in it. And when they put the concrete in, he said he can feel it setting up under the grader as he's getting finished shaping it up. He can actually feel it under the grader setting up under it, and it is, it's just like concrete whenever you drive across it now. So hopefully, when they'll get done with this, it'll be a very sturdy, long-term fix.
It should be. It's, I mean, and speaking with Sam Wheeler, who's a retired engineer from the Department of Transportation, and Sam works with another engineering firm now, he came up and kind of pointed out some other roads that similar process has been done. And he said, "This road should be probably your best road you're going to have in the county for a long, for a long time to come." So it's going to be a neat process to see them kind of finish up. Maybe the cost on it will start coming down, and we can continue to do this on other roads as they go. I mean, it was a pricey, pricey adventure, but I do think that it'll be one we'll, we'll be proud of for, for a long time. I do encourage you, it's, it's actually a pretty fascinating video to watch, the top one that, that comes up. I use that to finally share to, to engage in that phone conversation. I've shared a video, and they understood the process after they could watch it, so it is helpful. It's just kind of hard to communicate that to, to everyone without, and I know, I think Graham's actually going up with, with Kurt next week to, to capture some video and some ways we can kind of use. And I think the company that's doing the project wants to use it as part of, of some of their, their footage for the future, so it should be neat. All right, anybody else?
Good news. The long-awaited LIDAR has arrived. When you look on our website, it's going to be labeled contours 2 feet, okay? There's a little trick to actually using it. Feel free to come by the office, and I've showed it to a lot of people, and it has to do with the scale of the map. You've got to scale down to 50 feet or closer for it to actually populate the screen. But we finally have countywide 2-foot contours. And our 2022 aerial photography is now up. And Q Public has allowed us not to just keep three years' history, we now have four years' history on our aerial photography.
There's an example of 2-foot contours on your screen right there.
There you go.
That is fascinating.
This is cool, this is cool GIS stuff.
All right, who else has anything?
So it, it is that dreaded time of year. We got our approval letter yesterday from the Department of Revenue for the collection of property taxes. So thanks to the coordinated effort of, with the marshal's office, our office, Board of Commissioners Office, Finance Department, Board of Education, parish municipalities, and all play their part in accomplishing that and getting it done. So our books actually opened up last night. Your bills are available online if you want to go look at it. If you want to pay online, you can do that there as well. You can do it by credit card, debit card, but that has, does have a 2.6% fee if you do that. We do have e-checks, flat $3 if you want to pay it online. The bills should mail out tomorrow, but we're going to use Monday as the actual mail date to ensure that everybody gets their 60 days beforehand. But like I said, the books are open. We've actually already had people come in today and pay on, pay their taxes because it's already available online. So if you want to look at it before it gets to you in the mail, you go online, it's on our website at pickensgatax.com, and, and, and get it from there. But that is, but that is available, so if you, if you want to do that. But that is available, so if you want to do that, it is there.
Daniel question. We printed one off today when we found out they were out there. Is that how the bills are going to be mailed without your phone number on the bill?
Whatever, what you had, it should be on that top portion there, there should be a phone number.
Your phone number is not on there. I talked to you earlier about not putting our phone number because it drives the people crazy because we can't take their tax bills, but our phone number is on there, but yours is not. So, you might want to get it from your vendor and see if they can change it.
Okay, so the ones that we got today, so we got sent through is the one that's going out of the mail. So, the ones that's on the website, they don't have the ones yet that is from Datamax. Datamax does the mailing. So, the ones that's on the website right this moment are matched to the ones that were sent out last year. Okay, so the amounts, all the other things that are on there is correct, your billing, your parcel ID, all that's correct. The ones that actually go out in the mail, those have not linked with what's online yet. That'll all happen Monday, whenever everything goes out live on that. So, it will look a little different come Monday, but nonetheless, as far as the amounts, all the other information is correct on the bill, it's just that what goes in the mail, the phone number for the Assessor's Office won't be on there. All of our information will be right there on the front.
Thank you. That makes people much happier.
Thank you. Well, I say thank you, I'm thinking you ruined our mood for the night. Anybody who wants to go online, we can give you a few addresses, you can look those up and pay those tax bills. I appreciate you getting on it so fast and getting us out. Take care. Any other department heads with updates? One thing I've been talking with Nathan over in the sign shop and then working with Bill back and forth, trying to begin the research process on, we continue to get phone calls about traffic calming measures, speed bumps or speed bumps, or different things that people are wanting in different areas. So, we've been beginning the process of trying to do the research from other counties, how their ordinances are in place, what their procedures are that are in place. What we've found up to this point in the majority of the areas that we've been able to find, metro areas have a lot that they say about it, municipalities have a lot that they say about it, rural counties rarely do, and it has to do with density of population and the other issues that can come with adding those in place, there's a lot of issues that they can cause. So, we're going to work on trying to prepare some information to discuss. I know I would be shocked if you don't get those questions from some of the people that contact you, just based on the amount of times that we get those in the office. So, if that does come up, we are in the process of trying to look at how other counties are handling that process. I think in total, Pickens County has six total speed bumps in the entire county right now. They're focused in two areas, so there's not a widespread amount, and there's reasons behind that when you look at what they are. I know gated communities, some gated communities have some on private roads that are separate from ours, but just be looking for that. We'll send out some of the research materials as we go and then kind of prepare. We're not at a point to make a presentation in a work session yet, but if you do have ideas, or if you hear concerns from somebody that kind of prompts something, feel free to pass that information so that we can include that in as we work toward a public hearing in the future to kind of listen to and try to see if there's a way to adopt that. That's just a preliminary statement on that. General discussion, any other, anything that either of you have?
I'm going to thank you all for the...
Any general discussion from the rest of the room before we adjourn to work session? We will convene at five-thirty in our regular meeting. I know I've got Miss Casey is here. We did bring up, we talked about the alcohol ordinance in our work session last week, and that's on the agenda for the following meeting. So, if you have a specific question, if there's a detailed question that y'all have and you want to get with her and grab her before she walks out, I know she had to leave close to five, so if you can get her, that would be one. I appreciate you very much. Thank you all for coming. We'll start back at five-thirty.